Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors reorganization meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please just stand for a moment of silence?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this fantastic year of 2023. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon this community and our neighbors and our families. We look forward to your grace in the year coming. Give us the strength and wisdom to follow your path this coming year of 2024 and everything we praise you. Amen.
Thank you. We have one executive session tonight. One of my board members, Jeff Mitchell, was joined by some, in specific, it was for potential litigation for professional services. And the announcement I'd like to make is that at the beginning of the year, we make the announcement that we are participating in the health care plan of the township. So I will be participating in the health care plan for myself, my family.
As will I. I will be participating as well.
Okay. And I'd like to officially welcome our new board member, Daniel Burkin. He's here today at his first meeting, so if he's nervous, please forgive him. I was at that seat once before as well. And happy new year to everybody.
The minutes should reflect that Jeff Mitchell is participating on the conference call.
Our board member Jeff is on conference call and the meeting is being recorded for broadcasting purposes on YouTube. All right, I have a public announcement I'd like to make. For the record, I'd like to state some facts for the public's knowledge. When we hear a tax increase, we all panic. That's definitely not the case in East Calico Township. Here are the facts. Our tax increase for 2024 is no greater than 1.8%, going from 1.768 to 1.80. In January 2021, there was an approximate 2% increase going from 1.733 to 1.768. If we want to talk about a tax increase that wasn't warranted, 2021 would have been the year, not to have one, with so many unknowns after one of the biggest pandemics that ever hit our country. Just to make this clear, here are the facts our manager previously put together during budget season. On a home assessed at $91,300 on Bill Drive, the increase will be $2.92. A home on Ashwood Lane assessed at $175,600, the increase is only $5.62. A home on Rosemont Drive assessment at $230,800, the increase is only $7.39. And lastly, a home on Royal Horse Way, assessed value of $421,300, that increase is only $13.48. The grand total the township will collect if all taxes are paid will be $34,081.69. Tommy, I thank you for putting these examples out on our website, visualizing it makes it a lot easier to understand how minimal the increase really is. The majority of the board at Budget Time decided to increase Rimstown Ambulance donation $5,000. We also decided to make a donation to Rhinehold's Ambulance for $8,000 and put $25,000 for Jerry Ozog to discuss emergency services in East Calico Township. The grand total of these three items discussed is $38,000. As a reminder, with the tax increase, we are only getting back $34,081.69. This demonstrates that the tax increase is going back into supporting a community. The last time there was a survey done of our emergency services in East Calico Township was sometime in the 90s, so we are well over 30 years now. We're way over the old. Rhinehold's Ambulance, if some may recall, came to the Board of Supervisors back in 2022 after we had adopted our budget for 2023, requesting a donation for their ambulance, and none was given. From data we received, they responded over 200 calls in East Calico Township in 2023. Past practice, the Board of Supervisors didn't make a yearly donation to Rhinehold's Ambulance. I personally think it's very important to do our part and make this an annual donation, and I encourage neighboring boroughs and municipalities to do the same. At the end of the day, we're all in it together and we need one another. It also should be noted, the majority of the 2023 board voted for the first time in over a decade to reduce a tax. In this instance, the hydro tax was reduced 25%, four receipts received in 2022, and 6% less in 2023. Some of the millage rates nearby are boroughs and municipalities are 1.91, 2.045, and 3.70. And our school millage rate is 20.1978. That's more than 10 times East Calico Township millage rate. In conclusion, East Calico still remains the lowest millage rate in the area. That's something we should all really be proud of. Public comment. A five-minute period will be placed now at the top of our agenda for all agenda items. If anyone has anything to comment about our agenda that's in front of you, please come up to the front, state your name, and your question will be addressed. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Forsythe, and I would like to make a petition to the board to have the property at Stony Hill Road and Gaining School Road, to have that property remain zoned agriculture. Although rezoning it to light industrial would have certain monetary benefits to the township, value is not always found in monetary means. The board should consider the value of preserving farmland for the future of our township, and that the value of a working farm for future generations cannot be measured in monetary means. I believe the evaluation done by Technicon supports the property in question to remain agricultural. In East Calico Township, there's 13,440 acres, and 1,181 acres are zoned agriculture. That's less than 10% agricultural lands in East Calico Township, where in Lancaster County as a whole, 68% of Lancaster County is farmland. Finally, the only place that we have a voice for the future of our farms in East Calico Township is our local land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right. Moving on to action items. Temporary board chair. I will make a motion to appoint Daniel Burkin as the position of temporary board chair.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to nominate. I'm making a motion to appoint Lorenzo Benora to the position of Chair of the Board Supervisor for 2024.
And I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the nomination. Moving forward, Board of Supervisors vice chair. I'll make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Mitchell to the position of vice chair for the Board of Supervisors for 2024.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Hello?
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurer. I'll make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Mitchell to the position of treasurer for 2024. Second that. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion on assistant treasurer to appoint Lorenzo Benora and Daniel Burkin, assistant treasurer.
I'll second that. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Official and volunteer appointments. I'm not sure if everyone has it in front of them, but we have a list of appointments. Goes from A to C, C, F, F. Yep, F, right?
Mr. Chairman, did we not address Township Secretary?
You're right. Sorry about that. I was trying to get ahead of myself. I make a motion to appoint Daniel Burkin to the position of Township Secretary for 2024.
And I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. 4G. Now we're at 4G. Official volunteer appointments. The list of appointments are there. Gentlemen, do you guys have any changes or anything you want to do to the list of appointments?
Mr. Chairman, the pension plan administrative officer, I would like to make a nomination to appoint Lorenzo Benora in that position.
I'll second that. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I didn't see an assistant on here in the meeting. One last thing off your plate, Tom. All right. So I will make a motion to approve official volunteer appointments as enumerated in the Township Manager December 29, 2023 memo, minus letter H.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we're at 4H. No, sorry. 4I. Oh, H. Holiday meeting schedule. The holiday meeting schedule. I'll make a motion to establish holiday and meeting schedules for 2024 as enumerated in the Township Manager December 29, 2023 memo.
Second that.
I'll second that motion.
That's three motions. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're a little, a couple of seconds behind. Foot phone life. All right. Now we're at... Four other establishments. I'll make a motion to establish township depository, vehicle reimbursement rate, and newspaper for record.
Second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll give the floor to Chief Savage for the corporal appointments. Chief?
Thank you. I'm happy to announce the promotion of three officers to the rank of corporal. And that would be, first off, Officer Keith McCabe. Officer McCabe's been with our department since the year 2018. He is certified accident reconstructionist, and he is currently on the Lancaster County Crash Investigation Team. Sir, if I could have you raise your right hand, Mr. The Oath. Please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Keith McCabe.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of corporal.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
The East Calico Police Department.
The East Calico Township Police Department.
And East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
And East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. McCabe, you have the honors. Next is Officer Zachary Weaver. Officer Weaver's been with our department since the year 2018. He is also an accident reconstructionist specialist, and he is assigned to the Lancaster County Crash Team. I failed to mention both Officer Weaver and McCabe have been acting shift supervisors for approximately two and a half years. Can you raise your right hand, please? Aye. State your name.
Aye, Zachary Weaver.
Do solemnly swear affirm that I will support.
Do solemnly swear affirm support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
For the East Calico Police Department.
For the East Calico Police Department.
In the East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
In the East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
With fidelity. Congratulations. Officer Weaver, would you do the honors? And lastly, Officer Josh Solow. Officer Solow's been with our department since the year 2000. He's instrumental in organizing Cole's Toy Drive for the last nine years. He was the founding coordinator for that, and it's quite an undertaking each and every year. Aye.
Aye, Joshua Solow.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
For the East Calico Police Department.
For the East Calico Police Department.
In East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
In East Calico Township, Lancaster County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Congratulations.
All round of applause. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Officer Keith McCabe, Officer Joshua Solow, and Officer Zachary Weaver to the position of corporal for the East Calico Township Police Department.
Second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving down to 4K. I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 21, 2023.
And I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Resolution 2024-01. It's for the 2024 appointed auditor. Tommy, do you want to say anything about that?
Yes, the second-class township code requires the Board of Supervisors to confirm the appointment of an appointed township auditor by resolution, and that is the board considering the seat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01 to appoint ZA LLC as the appointed auditor for the township accounts for fiscal year 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Resolution 2024-02, the new fee schedule for 2024.
A best management practice for municipalities is to regularly review and adopt a fee schedule in accordance with state law. State law provides municipalities with an opportunity to set a fee that is up to that amount to recover its cost and no less. So each year, the township should undertake a review of its expenses to issue all permits and other approvals and applications that we receive throughout the year, and to set a fee that is no more than 100% of that estimated cost. Before the board this evening is a resolution to set fee charges with regards to fees set. The township is proposing to recapture approximately 95% of its estimated expenses, so the fees would essentially be a user fee, which is important when we're trying to stay as sustainable as possible and wherever possible, not operate like federal government and state government at the same time. So the fee schedule presented before the board has enumerated all the pieces of paper we shuffled in exhibit A, exhibit B, and C of the charges that are set by our building inspector.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-02 to adopt the 2024 fee schedule.
Second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our list is the 2024 license caller, Resolution 2024-03. The resolution should look familiar to the board in reorganization meeting. We identify those collars that have demonstrated compliance with Act 101, the county code regarding the collection of materials, refuse materials and disciples. The resolution lists those firms that have completed the license agreement. The resolution would authorize the Board of Supervisors to execute those agreements and to issue the required permits.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-03 to designate licensed collars for 2024.
I'll second that. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on the list, we have Resolution 2024-04 for records retention.
Also, a best management practice for municipalities, each reorganization meeting, we consider those records that we are still required to retain under state law and authorize the proper disposal of records that have matured off of the retention schedule. This allows the township to delete and dispose of records that have no longer value to the municipality so that we are not holding on to the paper. And that is the resolution before the board this evening.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-04 to authorize destruction of certain records in accordance with Act 428 of 1968 as last revised.
I'll second that. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is CMB Development LLC, 2023-03. Gentlemen. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andy Balda from CMB Development. Matt Close, this is our sixth time, I think, in front of the board. New to this firm, I think the last time you were here, Matt, you just did requests to come back and just reiterate our request. Our request for the hearing of a resilient change for a parcel. We have, I don't know, the past five or six meetings, we've talked through the history of it, so we know what land was used for, how it's farmed. We're seeking to change it to light industrial from agriculture. We committed to the TBR funding process, and we're here simply tonight to either answer any questions or to ask recommendation that the Board of Supervisors move this along to hear for us to hear about case for rezoning. Then we'll have to present all the facts and the data, everything that we've presented and more over the last year, year and a half. So that's the request from us tonight. And we're here to answer any questions and understand if we've got anything to grant that in the box.
My first question, I think, Matt, right? You had said about doubling the 4,000 to the 8,000?
Correct.
Was that for the full 45 acres, or was that just for your 23 that you guys are buying or putting warehouse on? Is that for the full property or just that portion?
We, I said it for plus or minus 200,000. So that would be for 23.3 acres. I guess we can talk about that, but we don't have control of any of the rest of the property, so.
We'll only be acquiring those 23 acres.
Yeah. The whole property is 43 acres.
And the remaining will be left in Mr. Martin's ownership. Yeah, we did the last statement was $8,000. Four, it wasn't $4,000 was the maximum by the TBR. We agreed to double to $8,000 as for the unusable acre. That was the last, we understood the request to be, and we agreed to that request.
Have you guys considered any, what all site improvements look for you guys there? Do you guys have an idea pretty much? Or, like, that's one of my other main concerns. Just because you're probably required to do improvements to property frontage, but however, stony run road that is, I don't think you guys have frontage there, and that road's not in tip-top shape for a lot of truck traffic.
Yeah, we will have to make improvements based on, I don't know if we quantify that financially yet, or what the economic impact is, but we did do that at our first or second meeting when we were in here. And you can probably go over the story.
Sure, we can. I mean, it's our, we, so essentially, we're going to completely alter that entire system. We, so essentially, we're going to completely alter that entire area. We're able to do it all on our property, so we'll shift Gaming School Road into our property and shift Stone Hill Road into our property, which will make the intersection from right now, which is like a 70% degree angle to a 90% degree angle, so all lines of site will have no issues, improve turning rate I to allow for all-vehicle access, and, you know, as I said, prevent any side distance issues.
There's also some stormwater improvements that we have to change because of the flood.
So there's a full culvert there that we've talked about, how that, there's overtopping there currently when it rains, so we looked into the culvert that is at, what's the property?
Where across the street.
Yeah, and they, they amended one, so we will be planning to do the exact same culvert, really self-attempted issue, which the traffic engineer mentioned when we initially talked about it, right at the intersection.
That'll all be very difficult to lay down the process, but we can first get through the zoning, see if anyone listens to the zoning, Karen.
Yes, I mean, we, we didn't do a full, I mean, we couldn't get to that point without a full end of the plan, but we've looked at some turning rate I already, and I think we presented this when we came here a couple months ago.
Once, yeah.
It's all fully capable of being done on our property, and we're planning to do that.
Is there any, is there any plans on improving, I don't know how, what, to what extent, right? Stony Run Road, One Creek Road, anything there, or nothing?
Stone Hill Road.
Stone Hill Road, sure. I'm thinking about.
Yeah, so that, that road's been improved essentially until the Gold Rush property. So our plan is currently to widen the roadway from that, the end of the curbing there, down to the intersection into our property, so it would be widened and curved all the way down to our property, improving the whole area.
So before we improve all the highway system?
Yeah.
So you're planning on improving it from your entrance off of Gaimins?
Mm-hmm.
Over to Stone Hill and then out to where Gold Rush is?
To where it's, yeah, to where it's.
Up until where the school group is, yes. So it runs all the way until the end of the Gold Rush property on the left side, and then on the right side, actually, it actually runs further down.
But, but.
Well, that's not, it doesn't.
That does go far.
Yeah. So there's a property that's directly across the street, and I think they were here a couple, couple months ago for, I mean, it might have been areas to have some storage on their property on that right side of the property. That curbing can go way down to there, and then Gold Rush comes just past the Gold Rush property, so essentially anywhere that is not improved between Money Creek and Stone Hill, we will be, we're planning to improve.
Okay, if I walk up the trail, please.
That's just.
So these are sort of the rough improvement subject property, subject access improvements on the railroad, that would reduce those spots, keep it out. The improvement stopped about here, you know, comes off the map, off the map this way, so we're going to continue these improvements until the current conditions that are approved to that, whatever direction it's that way.
This way.
Correct. That's up towards Money Creek, I think.
Yes, that's right. So you approve from, this is all approved, and you're improving that part?
We have to approve this. This is part of our scope of improvement. It's not, it's unimproved at this point. So if we widen this square, this, it's outside the 90 for side distance, and then we're going to improve this over here, and this, the culvert is there, we're kind of.
Traffic from the east of here, I guess that would be correct, from Stone Hill and 897, that would be close to truck traffic. The best of your.
Correct, yeah, it's the other way, I think, from where the corner is at, but, so down, this is actually.
Over here would be 897, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
No, it's the opposite, over here.
Yeah.
897 is over here.
Oh, Stone Hill, Stone Hill Road goes out to.
Correct.
It is a large south.
Yeah.
Gator goes out the 897, so is Stone Hill, so either at the end of Gator and at the end of Stone Hill, on the 897, the road should close to truck traffic.
Correct, but this entrance is going to be completely prevented.
No, not.
Correct.
The entrance here.
I know that the entrance here. I mean, I don't think we're, there would be no way to prevent it at a full service intersection, but there would be no reason to prevent it. I mean, if you, this is a tough picture, but if they were to go left coming out of here, it would be just running into more.
Yeah, out to 897, but. So this is a disaster intersection right here.
Off of 897 and Stone Hill is a disaster. I think it's actually right there, this side. So, I don't know, that would be my only issue with any traffic going that way. Google Maps will bring somebody here from that direction, but I don't know if there's, I guess that would be something for Breck Knott Township to decide, or Penknott, whether they allow trucks to even turn at that intersection.
Yeah, no, you know, we haven't done anything through the process, we're, you know, first step to get the, get this through the zoning, that is, we did this initial work just to gauge, just so we can say to you guys, what we thought through this initial.
Are you, is the property being divided between?
Correct.
So you're only asking for 23 acres to be rezoned?
Initially asked for 23 acres to be rezoned of the entire thing. A few meetings back, we had a discussion that it may be beneficial, at the request of the Board, to change the whole property to industrial, light industrial. We want back the owner, he's willing to do that. We're agnostic about which way to go. Whenever the town's preferred, we're going to do it.
But then you would propose to subdivide if.
We're going to subdivide regardless of.
We're going to do, so he can retain the ownership of his.
That pays for it.
So it would, it would be subdivided for ownership purposes, but perhaps proposed for rezoning for both, both apps, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're only going to utilize the 23 acres that we've assessed.
How many total acres is it, 40?
43.
Oh.
43.3 acres.
Okay, so he'll.
He'll retain 20 acres because it, we, it partly, we can retain a farm set, so he can save.
Okay.
After a development perspective, it just sort of makes the most sense to do that, and based on the topography and conditions.
Okay. Jeff, you there?
Yes, I'm here. I, let me, let me state for the record, I haven't seen a proposal yet that I'm able to vote against for.
What, Jeff, this is Andy Balda, what proposal would, what would you like to see in a proposal that may change your mind?
According to our solicitor there, we can only look at what's put in front of us.
Well, we've been playing this game for a long time here, and so I don't mean to be in disrespect on the game side, but we're, I think we've proven that we're willing to work with the township if we know what mark to hit. Anything that's reasonable, that we think this is the right place, the right development because of everything I've now seen with express over the last year, we'd be guessing. You know, we're here to work with you guys, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to, we want to try and figure a way through that's acceptable there.
Kind of an odd question, right? I know I.
For me?
No, 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 I'm saying, kind of an odd question for, for you gentlemen. I know I didn't get it, though. Have you guys, did you guys by chance talk to any of my board members behind the public meeting, or did, did any of that happen?
I haven't discussed anything, I don't know. How do we communicate with?
What's that?
I communicate with Tommy.
Okay. Well, that's just, you guys, like you said, you've been coming back and forth a lot, so I want to make sure I have all the information that the township manager's providing to me.
Yeah.
If you guys have conversations with one of my board members, I don't know, because I haven't heard from them, and I haven't received any phone calls either, so I just want to make sure I have all the information, so.
And, you know, if, if it's easier to figure out what you guys want to do that way, I'm.
No, no, I'd rather everything go through the manager, that way we're all on the same page, and there's no ifs, ands, or buts, or you said this, or I said that.
Yeah, and I'm not claiming anybody's saying anything, also, my point is, no, one of, is just one of trying to get a decision and trying to get a decision that's acceptable to the Board. And that's a, that's a lot of trouble over there, what, what we can do. You know, we have a long road ahead of us, even if we go the next step, and there'll be ample, you know, ample opportunities, if there's other ways that we can assist the township, to, to express those, you know.
You know, like I said, you guys, you guys know about, I told you last time, you guys know my thought about the whole warehouse process thing, right? You know, a lot, a lot of things come in mind. For, for a tax base, warehouses are good, right? Because they're not putting strain on our schools and all, and all that, right? They're bringing a lot of employees and whatnot. But one, one thing that I think we all should really focus on here is also, all these big buildings here are fire companies, right? Our, our fire companies, do we even have the apparatus to, to answer to a, to a call with all these new, big, massive buildings coming here currently?
It's a legitimate point, I've addressed this, I'm sorry to interrupt you, finish the whole.
Currently, with our refire company that we have, I don't think we even have adequate personnel to, to respond to a call without calling a whole bunch of second and third alarm and a whole bunch of other companies from the area. Apparat, I hear from them all the time, their apparatus is aging, they don't have adequate equipment, or this, or that, and, and it's like, okay, well, what do we do that we can help? Obviously, I can't sit here and, and ask for things, you know, that's, it's not, you just can't do it, but, you know, I, I like to say to people, and we're sitting in here right now, take in consideration also the impact you guys are going to put on, on the township as well, from first responders and everything. It's not just, hey, give me this, and I'm going to pay my taxes. I think it goes beyond that, especially being a part of our community, you know? If, if we're going to welcome you and be a part of our community, or you guys, anybody has to do their part in giving back to the community as well, not just put up, put up a 30,000 square foot restaurant, we'll say, we'll say restaurant because I'm a restaurant owner, right, and just don't care about the people in the community or whatnot. You always got to give back, and, yeah, I'm not, I'm just not saying, I'm just throwing it out there, like, we should always keep that in consideration.
Well, I can, I can give you some of my experience in the past, based on, if we would go to a rural, more, much more rural township than this, and we put up a similar-sized building, first of all, they're all ESFR sprinkler system, right? Which you're, you're fire marshal, you guys know.
Yep.
It has to be, just to get insurance, right, to get those things, so that's one thing to know about. Two is that I think we've proven through our actions and our willingness to commit to stuff that we don't really need to do, but we think it's important to be part of the community for the TDR process. Listen, I bought more fire trucks than I would remember. I'm not saying I buy a fire truck, but I'm saying fear to listen, because I think you're right. You know what I mean? If Fury said, if you welcome us, and we have a long process to go through, except for the fifth time, but if we go through that process, you have your 50 checks of balance and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. And through that process, if we meet with your fire marshal, and it's a reasonable request, or we could say, we're all ears, right? Because it benefits everybody. It benefits my future tenant. More, you know, it's not just my obvious thing, owes $3 on the line with them. You know, we're not a big giant company, we're, we're, we're local guys, so I'm in Alph, he's in, he's in Berks County, so it's not like we're from New York City or something, and we're all ears, and I've proven in the past, and I can give you references to other municipalities where I've done what I've said. So, you know, if it's, I understand you can't ask, so. I guess I'm more of a cut to the chase guy, like, hey, let's figure this out, if it's good for you, it's good for us, let's do it, but I know we're at an impasse a bit.
I, I, I think it's all about the relationship as well. You know, there's a lot of fly-by-mo people that come in and say, promise you all the things in, under the sun, and then, once they get what they want, see you later, I may know who you are.
We use the hammer, right? You, the thing that you know, right, that not everybody knows who goes through this process, at the end of the day, you know, you have the hammer, else we don't get laid in the final approvals, and you have another second shot to see, you're going to get, view who the tenant is when you go for building break, right? There's so much between now and then, that we'd like your permission to restart that process, see if it works with that collectively, it's better for you to call. That's all we're asking for.
I have a couple of things, real quick. Personally, I don't think we're all here if we don't have our farms. So agriculturally, I, I'm with Jeff, when we, and Mr. Forsythe mentioned it earlier, I, our farmland is what keeps us alive, okay? The second part of my thought process is, what does the landowner want? I don't want somebody to tell me what I can and can't do with my own property, so I look at the landowner, what his wishes are. Would you, do you have those numbers on what the tax benefits are to the, you gave them last meeting?
Yeah, let me address your first comment, then Matt can go through all the taxes, he knows better than I do, but we did have the landowner in here, in the summertime last year, and he discussed how difficult was the farm, and I'm not a farmer, I know it's difficult to not the farm, but his yield are down, it's not ideal, this used to be formerly his own industrial land, it's part of what was used for the industrial improvements with the lift station, so this is a, I, in my mind, it's a farm, but it's not a gradual farm in the middle of 1,000 acres of farm, right? So usually, we wouldn't try and do something like that. This is a logical progression. That was once so profitable. So from a farm he asked, like, he's keeping his 20 acres, is he a farmer or not, I don't know, but from what I understood, from a limit, from him, from the landowner himself, that it's not a great farming, it doesn't have great farming capacity. I think, I think Supervisor Mitchell said, you know, said something different last, I don't know, he's, you guys are farmers on that, but I don't know if it's the, the best farm in the world. So from that aspect, he's well-formed, he was willing to testify, not testify, to present here, he's willing to do it again. And I know we are at a disadvantage because you have a early ballot for a year, so that's, I just wanted to reiterate to that.
So the question of the taxes, what are the tax, what are we looking at from a tax register?
For our school district, it's $272,000 a year, township will be 20, just under $24,000 a year, and county will be $39,000 a year.
And one other thing to note on the tax side of it is, you know, we've agreed not to pursue a Lerna by that this project, so we're not going to be seeking.
Well, it's golden, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That's not an option anymore.
It's gone.
It's gone.
Yeah, it is not, yeah.
So to Chairman Benora's point, as I look at these, and I think about what's best for the township, what's best for the, my community, my family, and my neighbors, I also look at the landowner themselves, and what they want to decide, and what they want to do. I also look at the location, I see it's currently surrounded by highway, others own it light industrial or industrial around it, it used to be zoned at a little while ago, so I see all sides of this, and I'm, you know, I'd like to hear more from Jeff as well, but from Chairman Benora's point, $24,000 in taxes to our township is nothing to scuff at, but at the same time, the burden that would be put upon our township through our volunteer fire departments, through, you know, our first responders, you know, certainly to think about, and something that's weighing on me. My last question for you is, you started this conversation with what you were asking for tonight, so what exactly are you asking for us to vote on tonight? So I understand better, because it is my first meeting.
So, so let's hear it, Rob, explain it better, I can.
So at this point, members of the Board, the process has progressed through review by the county and the township planning conditions. If you wish to take the next step, it would be to authorize us as solicitors to work with Tommy and the staff to prepare a proposed ordinance to advertise and set a hearing date on which you would consider adopting an ordinance to rezone from Ag to light industrial. You would not be considering anything in connection with the plan of CMB Development, except as an example of what could be done on this property if it were rezoned to light industrial. You would be considering whether it's appropriate to rezone this parcel at this location to a light industrial district, which would permit any of the light industrial uses. You're not permitted to tie that decision to a particular plan, is another way of describing it.
So the vote this evening would be to take the next step in the process, to have an official hearing on the ordinance change.
Correct. And just to state it clearly and obviously, at that time, you could then decide yes or no. You're not preloading the decision by, on the request, by making a decision to go to a formal legislative hearing. to go to a formal legislative hearing.
Okay. Are your, are your plan, um, are your ideas or plans to zone just twenty-three acres? Or are they to zone the, rezone the entire forty-three?
It doesn't matter to us, we were initially proposing the twenty-three, those requested for, to, for us to modify that, to rezone the entire thing. Whatever the township wants, we're doing, doesn't affect us one bit, and the, and the landlord is willing to do it, considering what he's doing there, I don't know why.
We could, that's what originally was, they presented the plan at twenty-three. Then I think one of the board members asked for them to, you know, kind of make some new sense of just rezone part of it, rezone the whole thing.
The, the county makes that comment too. So currently, we have forty-three acre, forty-three acres?
Yeah.
Forty-three acres of agricultural land surrounded by industrial land. We would be, by adopting an ordinance to rezone, under one consideration, expanding the industrial and reducing the agricultural, leaving essentially a smaller island of agriculture, agricultural land surrounded by industrial. The county suggests that you might consider rezoning the entire thing under those circumstances. What, at the end of the day, there are a lot of considerations. What does the property owner want, what does the proposed purchaser want? What's the tax impact, what's the impact on our emergency services? We could list, you know, a seemingly endless list of considerations. It all boils down to only two questions, uh, under the strict burden of the law, and that is, does the land planning for East DeKalb County Township require, or is it a good idea to have more industrial land? And is it a good idea to have it at this location? Those, those are the two general considerations into which every other consideration feeds.
That's what it comes down to. Do you want another warehouse, or not? It's pretty much the way it comes down to.
Well, again, anything that's permitted in light industrial, but these days, we're getting warehouses, of all sorts.
Correct.
You know, it could be.
Not only here.
Right, it could be a distribution center, it could be somebody who manufactures and distributes his own production, but warehousing is a part of almost every industrial proposed development in one sort of way.
I don't know if you were here last meeting, Jeff, and asked Matt if he had a tenant, and he said no, right? He didn't have a tenant yet, so. Way too early for that.
Yeah, we don't even have land about to start.
And that's, again, what we're seeing, tenants are not interested in committing until the, the landlord is well down the way of permitting. Because if they could go somewhere else on two twenty-two, sooner they'll, they'll go there.
So the thought was that the last meeting, we'd wait till you got here, so you, you're the first. It's your first meeting, it's, it's a, it's a big decision, but with the board member leaving, it wasn't fair enough, cast a vote, and you're gonna have to deal with it for the next six years, so. So the question of motion, the question tonight is, are we willing to move forward with conversations about ordinance, uh, zone change? This is not even actually voting on that this evening.
Correct.
It's totally.
To have, and have retired.
Hearing, it's considered to advertise for a public hearing for the rezone. And there's nothing guaranteed at that point either.
Right, at, at that point, at that point, at that point, you have a hearing, and either somebody moves to adopt the rezoning, somebody moves to reject the rezoning, or nobody makes a motion, and nothing happens. So you're, you're, you have all of your choices remaining available to you.
A second time.
A second time, yeah. Yeah, you're not making any choice, except to hear this all in a more formal fashion.
Okay. And to be fair, 'cause I don't know if you were here, I, I, I let them know, I, me personally, I didn't go to the next step, 'cause I don't like wasting people's time and money. And it's gonna cost time and money to get to the next step, so that was me. But, but that was also eight, nine, ten months ago, they've been here eighteen times by now, so, well, six times. Like, like, uh, the solicitor said, you're not accepting anything, if you wanna go to the next step, you, if you feel like it, you make the motion, if you don't, then to be continued. Jeff, what were you looking to hear to get to a vote?
Well, let, let, let me, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit to hear all of the conversation, the connection, a little weak. Uh, but let me, uh, let me apologize to, uh, Mr. Bald there to start with, uh, for the, the, the delay. I understand that, his frustration, um, I, I think maybe he needs to understand that, um, this kind of vote is a no-win for our board supervisors. There's a lot of people in our community who not wanna see another warehouse anywhere in the community. And, uh, then there's others that, uh, would be okay with them, um, in the proper location. And, you know, from everybody I've talked to, um, it's somewhere near and even split. So, you know, whatever we vote on, there's gonna be people upset with us, e- either way we go. So, uh, please, please understand that. Um, you know, as, as far as rezoning the whole farm versus part of it, uh, the property owner came in and said he has trouble making a living on a forty-three acre farm. So, to take twenty-three acres away from that and leave twenty left, um, that's not a farm anymore. Uh, when you're, when you talk about giving it up, um, you know, the whole farm needs to go, we're, we're not gonna be able to save twenty acres and have anybody make a general living off of that. Um, and, you know, as I stated last meeting and previous meeting, I'm, I'm a preservation advocate. Um, you know, I, we have, uh, multiple farms in the township preserved, but there's many, many hundreds of acres of agricultural zone land in our township unpreserved. And I would like to see more of that happen. So, um, I appreciate the offers that have been made, uh, by C and B, but I just don't see that, uh, you know, it's doable, um, with the proposal that's out there.
So Jeff, I, I do appreciate what you're saying, and thank you, thank you for that. Um, do you want, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna keep coming back and waste your time, we've done this often, right? If, if, if it's important to do the whole thing at eight thousand dollars an acre, I mean, we think that's, that's not what we agreed to, it's not what we thought you wanted to, but we'll, I'll agree to that right now, if that helps preserve more farmland, and you know, we put it in the papers wherever we wanna do it. And if it's, if it becomes a no vote, it becomes a no vote, no vote, and I'll move on. But, um, I think we've met our case, I think we're willing to, to make it the right location, right? And, and this is the right location for us, if you're ever gonna do it anyway.
There's, there's, um, a lot of people in our township that will just, the idea of a dairy farm with cows on it going away for a warehouse, they just will not accept such a thought.
Okay.
So we, we have to, we have to make pitch for that.
Okay, fair enough.
So, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're not negotiating this tonight. As I said earlier, we can only look at what's put in front of us.